Okay, I guess we'll bring the planning board meeting to order here. A special meeting with a joint meeting with the town board.
That's it?
That's it.
Ditto for the town board. Do we hear motion? It's a work session.
No, we're not.
All right, terrific. So Lou, do you want to start it off?
Sure. I don't have to say much tonight. On September 20th, I sent you all a memo consisting of two tables. One are items that really are ready to be perceived for review. Things that, based on the discussion of your last joint work session, that you all pretty much seem to accept. If you disagree, now is the time to say so, so that we can move them to the other table. The first table is four items which seem to have been agreed upon. The next table is 15 items, which, based on that discussion, seem to beckon more discussion with the full board. So, we can start with number one.
I'm going to request, if it's okay with everybody, we have Gray Williams here and members of the Landmark Advisory Committee. And they've requested that we take that one up first, if everybody doesn't mind. So they could go home.
And before we do that, the first four, while everybody seems to be agreeable about moving forward, nobody's signing off on the contents of the draft petition and how those proposed amendments are drafted. We'll get to that later on.
Right. It's all just conceptual approval.
You want to move?
Conceptual agreement.
Yeah, there's process behind every decision today. Item number three on the table labeled "Items to be Further Discussed" deals with the guest house. And so, that is the first item that you want to discuss. And let me remind you all, per the approved multifamily plan development, preliminary development concept plan, the guest house was to be preserved. And that was what was indicated in the finding statement and all the documentation at the time. It's consistent with the approved preliminary development concept plan. What is on the table right now is the applicant has requested the removal of that structure, rather than the preservation of that structure. So the change that they're looking for is that you allow it to be demolished and rebuilt in a different form than what it is today, which is different than what was originally intended.
Gray.
Ready?
Yeah, I think Gray would like to say something.
Do you want me to do your report?
Is that mic working over there?
I'd like to put up a picture basically, so you can see what we're talking about.
I'm not sure I need a mic.
It's better for the bullet homes to be able to hear you.
All right. There we go. This picture of the house, it must be familiar with the guests' cases. Anyone here who is not, this is what we're talking about. You now have a history of this house and its site, which I hope will give you some idea of why they consider it important. By the way, I'm the town historian and the ex officio chair of the Landmarks Advisory Committee. If I speak. This is a well-loved and iconic landmark in this community. The only reason it is an official Newcastle landmark is that the owners wrote consent to it. Instead, they promised to preserve the building together with the Digest Headquarters Building. They've kept that promise very well in the repurposing of the headquarters. And it's dismaying to us that they now propose to break that promise concerning this really far more historic building. I believe the town should not consent to its demolition without overwhelming evidence that it cannot be preserved. Only today did I obtain a copy of the engineer's report on the house, which I presume contains the evidence that has led the owners to want to tear it down. The problems described in the report are mainly superficial: rotted siding, upstairs plaster damage, roof leakage, and the like, all of which are readily reparable. In no way does the report say that the basic structure is unsound or unsafe. I maintain that it is sound, in far better shape than many old buildings its age, starting with one I know intimately, the Horace Whaley House. If the present owners don't wish to preserve the house for their own uses, we suggest that they allow someone else to do so. The house and its subsidiary buildings, by opinion, represent a prime piece of commercial property located right at the entrance of a major commercial center. They could be used for offices, for professional services, perhaps even a restaurant. That's what the Digest often used it for. Perhaps local realtors might be consulted about marketing it, either refurbished or as-is, with enough land to provide sufficient parking and screening from the neighbors. So finally, I have two questions for you. To Summit Greenfield, do you intend to keep your promise to preserve the building? And to the town and planning boards, what responsibility do you believe you have to assure its preservation? And now, do you have any questions for me?
I think you've made your opinion very clear. Thank you, Gray.
Thank you.
So, should we continue to discuss that?
Sure. I'm wondering if there are any of the comments from the members of the public or the society that would add anything to what Gray mentioned. If not, we do have, I guess, questions to the applicant. And you're back from the applicant. Now, the planning board did hear this, oh, I guess about two years ago in our deliberations. And at that point, I believe, we got that engineering report. And at that point, they had changed their position, I guess. And were planning to demolish the building and to replace it with a clubhouse and a pool. So, keeping the clubhouse there will probably result in some sort of changes in the layout right now that we're looking at for this village. So perhaps the applicant can speak to us in terms of their position at this point on this house.
Hey, how we doing?
May I just ask one question of clarification? Are we talking about the one building or the three buildings that are? There's a breezeway that connects to another building and a building in the back. Is this all three or just that one that's up for discussion?
Well, I think Gray mentioned all three buildings, the accessory buildings as well.
I don't know what the plans are. They've asked to demolish this one, and that's what the engineering report. The other two buildings are, of course, much more modern buildings.
Yes.
One is a service building with two garage spaces that I think was used for the superintendent's office.
They're being used now, I believe.
It may be.
Yeah, there's air conditioning, it's going on as we speak.
Somebody's using it.
And the other was essentially a banqueting hall that was an annex put up in the '60s, I believe, by the Digest. It also is a modern building. They have a commercial kitchen in the house itself.
Thank you.
The MFPD, PDCP spoke specifically to this house, the guest house.
And not the accessory buildings?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'll start off with a brief introduction. I feel like I know probably two-thirds of the group.
Introduce yourself to those who don't know you.
James Fitzpatrick, I'm the division president for Toll Brothers in New York. So, a quick introduction on Toll Brothers, and who we are for the handful of people who are not familiar with us. So where we are, Toll Brothers is a Fortune 500 company. This past year, we are 428 on that list. We are the nation's leading builder of luxury homes. Our company began business 50 years ago. We went public in 1986. This past fiscal year, we reported $7.1 billion of revenue, delivering over 8,000 homes nationwide. We currently operate in 22, which may be 23 states now. I've got to go back and check. We just acquired a home builder down in the Charleston, South Carolina area last week. We serve an enormous spectrum of both home buyers and renters. Everyone from your traditional move-up buyers, empty nesters, families that are launching their kids off to college, families that have never had kids, families who have growing families, as well as urban suburban renters. And we build everything from luxury, you know, single-family detached to attached homes, master planned resort-style communities, urban, low, mid, high-rise communities as well. Our company operates its own architectural, engineering, mortgage title, land development, golf course development, and management, and landscape subsidiaries. We also have our own manufacturing facility down in, right outside of Philadelphia, that operates as our lumber distribution center and house component assembly manufacturing operations plant. Couple of items that we like to brag about a little bit. In 2019, we were named the world's most admired home builder in Fortune magazine's survey of the world's most admired companies. It's the fifth year in a row we've been honored with that distinction. We've also received numerous other awards, including Builder of the Year for both Professional Builder Magazine and Builder Magazine, being Builder Magazine's first two-time recipient. Within this kind of more regional geographic area, UBS does metro studies where they rank the number of building permits pulled. And Toll Brothers is number one in the market share for New Jersey, New York, and the Pennsylvania markets. We've been operating in New York for 20 years. We've built over 20 communities and have delivered over 1,300 homes in Westchester County. So as big of a builder and an operation we are, we have been in this local market for a very long period of time. So that said, you know, we're proud of the progress that we've made with the board in the two years that we've been working through the site plan development with both the planning board and the town's professional staff. And we are extremely excited to get underway with construction activities and starting our sales activities as well. So, I'll speak specifically to the clubhouse and how we've come to be here. The structure as it is now, in our strong belief, cannot be repurposed for a community building. Not only is the condition of, while it may be relatively well-cared-for as, you know, in relation to other homes of its age, it's not a structure and a foundation that you would invest millions of dollars on top of in order to design and construct a community building that would ultimately become that homeowners association's burden for maintenance and use, right? They want, the space has to use. Everything from accessibility, you know, a building like this, we would need to figure out how to get an elevator in here, right? To life safety, it would need to be brought up to code for fire sprinklers and those sorts of issues and emergency egress. There are pretty clear evidence of, while there is, there are leaks in a roof that could be very easily fixed, how long those leaks have been there and the resulting damage from that neglect is essentially like an onion, right? We're going to start peeling this building apart. And once you start putting it back together, you know, what are you really left with? If you strip the roof apart, well, now all the lumber underneath the roof needs to be replaced, and all the roof sheeting needs to be replaced, and then all your siding needs to be replaced, and all the windows need to be replaced. And then, you know, really, what are you left with as far as, you know, the historical structure? So we're in the process of having a little bit more of a detailed report put together. I know that the initial assessment that we provided to the planning board some time ago, it was received by the board, reviewed. We got your initial feedback. At that point, it didn't seem like there was a need for us to progress it further or dive in any deeper. But, you know, with the comments from Mr. Williams, we're certainly doing that now. So, we've engaged not only our structural engineer to go back in and take a little bit more of a deeper dive into the structure, but also the architecture firm who's going to be tasked with, or would be tasked with trying to repurpose this building, to understand, you know, what are, you know, the basic, you know, dimensions of the rooms? Are they even appropriate for congregation? You know, your ceiling heights in structures of that age versus what you want your ceiling heights to be in, you know, community buildings now. And that's what we're going to present to the board within the next couple of weeks.
Can you just clarify for me? So the structural engineer and the architect are actually Toll Brothers employees?
No, so we've hired third-party architects, yeah.
And engineers?
Correct.
And for clarity, when you got involved in the project, the agreement was to preserve this, if you could, correct?
Yeah, when we got involved in the project, the thought back then was that it was going to be preserved, but to be repurposed as a clubhouse, right?
And when was that?
2017, 16, 2016.
So in 2016, when you agreed, you knew that this was an old, an old structure, obviously. And you knew there wasn't an elevator? And you knew there wasn't sprinkler systems?
Sure.
And you knew that, based on structures outside, based on your business, there could be issues with heights and size of rooms?
Sure.
So there's nothing that really you know now, structure aside, because we don't want to waste our time if it's not a, because what I'm hearing is even if it's not a structural issue, repurposing it is just not really feasible because you have to go back and make certain changes. For example, you mentioned an elevator for egress. But you knew that back in 17?
Yeah, we've certainly got a little bit of an education over the last couple of years. We have a project up in Cortland Manor, New York. Valeria is the name of the project. And we, on that part of the development agreement that was associated with that project was rehabbing what was a really grand, you know, ballroom. And it was a facility that used to be, it was built in the 1910s or 1920s by an industrialist. And he used it, he used to bring his employees of his company up to this estate, and they would vacation there. So it was this really grand structure.
But that aside, and that may be true, but I'm talking about this structure here. The question that I have, though, is if there was an agreement at time one, structure aside, obviously you'd have to confirm that. With your profession, your training, your experience, you know that you were going to have to put in certain things that this didn't have. So that shouldn't have changed?
Yeah, not necessarily. So back in 2015 and 16, you know, the New York, the code was updated in 2000, I think in 17. So there are some different hurdles that we've had to come across. And also, look, we're just, well, a decision we made back then, you know, we're not looking to repeat the same mistake twice, right? We've been through this. We know, you know, best-played plans, like, once you start again, once you start really taking these structures apart, you're not left with, for us to stand up here and make a promise that that, if we were to go in and renovate that structure, that we would be preserving anything, would be, we couldn't make that statement honestly. Because by the time you're left taking it apart and over putting it back together, so it's a functioning facility, there's very little left. And what is left, again, is a foundation that's 100-plus years old that you wouldn't invest the money to, you know, millions of dollars to build on top of. So...
Right, I mean, so it boils down to a dollar and cents issue.
Do you want to step up to microphone, Felix, please? Yes, unfortunately. He knows the drill.
Yeah, Felix, it's actually, James was involved then. This was the PCDP that was approved prior to Toll Brothers' involvement. Candidly, it was just one of the 158 conditions that were imposed upon the overall approval. And I can look you all in the eye and say, you know, we had not, as owners of all this property, invested the time, the energy, or even remotely the expertise to figure out how it would be converted. It was that the emphasis at the time was save the 200 buildings, save the 200 buildings, save the 200 buildings. And that became our historic focus. And we didn't really know what was going on up here or realize that it maybe had any passion attached to it. Dave, who's been on the Reader's property for all the years before, always represented that the building was in bad shape and had a lot of additions attached to it. So although he may be trying to take the hit for, I know where you were going, why didn't you know this? He didn't know it because he wasn't there at the time. We didn't know it because we didn't really investigate it, so...
I think the issue for the town board and the planning board succinctly stated is that this came up as an environmental issue, as part of the seeker review. And it was addressed the historical significance of that building. And the answer was, we're keeping it. So we didn't have to worry about appropriate mitigation, things like that. Now, the door's being opened, and that's what you'll have to fill in your seeker analysis in connection with this guest house.
Unless, when the representation was made that we are keeping it, was it we're keeping it contingent on the ability to repurpose it as a community center? Or was it simply, we're keeping it?
The letter is attached to the material.
Yeah, I was trying to skim it.
It wasn't specified.
I don't think it was specified. That was basically to shut off further environmental analysis because we're not doing anything with the building.
Right, you have to understand, Toll Brothers came in in 2018, 2017. They did, they produced a structural analysis because at that time, they were then focused on the site and were looking for a location for a community center. That's when the building became targeted for the community center. The town, in the finding statement, never termed it for repurposing. It was to be preserved.
I guess my point is just, it doesn't really matter to us how they use the property.
Correct.
And also, that was done in 2009. So if there has been a deterioration in the property since 2009, that's 10 years, Summit Greenfield still owned it at that time. So isn't it their burden to have kept up their property not to now say, oh, it's in really bad disrepair 10 years later? When they had the responsibility to maintain it the whole time? Or the opportunity to maintain it?
So the answer that that would be, initially, we had a leaseback with Reader's Digest, and they were maintaining a lot of the property. And at some point, Dave can help me, they actually used it as a guest house. And of course, we all know what happened to Reader's Digest, and, you know, that they no longer continue to use it. And it was just politely, just another building on 114 acres that Reader's had kind of vacated. So deceiving is an issue, and we're going to try to figure it out together, how we resolve it. But candidly, back then, it was politely enough to say, it was another building.
No, I get it, but Reader's wasn't there in 2009 when this agreement was signed.
Reader's left in mid-2010.
There were portions of Reader's.
So they filed for bankruptcy in 2009, they left in 2000, money in 2010. I think the point was that this is all evolving from a PCDP that's like 15 years old.
Rather than, you know, point fingers at who knew what and whatever, I think we've got to try to figure out a solution, right?
I have an idea. I mean, why can't, if we're talking just about the main building, I don't care that much about the ancillary buildings at all. They don't fit my criteria, at least. And I sense that they may not fit Gray's either. But why not make it a private parcel? And sell it to a private, you know, owner? Carve the piece of property out, make it an acre, whatever the zoning is, and then build around it?
I mean, I think that would be hard for Toll Brothers if they want that area for a clubhouse or to utilize it to take out that piece, might be difficult.
It might be difficult if they wanted to stick with the number of buildings they have right now. But if the number of buildings came down a little bit, then they would have room.
Yeah, I would question the premise. I understand that that's what they want to do. And it's unfortunate that when we started then, it was, it was, promise is a tough word to use in this case, but it was suggested that everybody was going to do their best to keep the building and to find an appropriate use for it. Times change, but it would have been really terrific if we'd have known back then that the repurposing of the building was going to be this particular use. And so, the statement was made that, gee, it's going to cost millions of dollars, a million, a lot of money to repurpose this building for the intended use. So to me, the obvious answer is, well, then don't do it. It seems to me that the building has other repurposed futures that could be done in a way that makes it a contribution to the community, stays there. And with respect to building the community center with the pool and all the ancillary things that that center is going to need, there's a lot of property here. And I don't understand why it has to go here, and this building needs to be taken down.
So there's three, let me just summarize. It seems like there's three options, correct me if I'm wrong. One is it stays as-is and they do a separate parcel and keep it as-is. Two is they spend the money and repurpose it, assuming that everybody even agrees to that. And three is they find, well, three is tied into one, where they have to find another location for their clubhouse. That's it.
And another use for the building.
No, unless they make it a separate parcel.
Like if they, but if they keep the building and they relocate the clubhouse, can that building be something else? Could that be a residential unit?
Yeah, that's one of the options, right?
Could that be a really cool residential unit that gets adapted?
Can I suggest number four?
Sure, what's number four?
We do have a number four that we have talked about, actually. So one of the things I'm saying, we're going to have more information within a couple of weeks, as Mr. Frank said, Mr. Fitzpatrick said. But the other possibility that we talked about was the location is an issue, as is the structural sound issue with respect to the building. Is also the possibility of taking the building and moving it to another location, even on the property, which might also be something, you even, the town has property that it's trying to find uses for. We could potentially, and we're going to look into that if that was something that the boards had interest in, of being able to pick it up off its foundation, keep it the way it is, and move it to another location on the building, which might serve as a potential as an alternative force. So at least I'm raising that. If that has interest, we could also investigate that as a possibility.
But on that issue, there's probably, there's a little bit of history attached to the location as well. So that might be a little bit of a more difficult lift for you. But certainly, it's something we could consider.
Right, but we would not be repurposing, but we would potentially be preserving it and on the property not very far away.
Gray, how do you feel about that?
I beg you to rule it out. We lose half, more than half, of its historic value if you rule it. This is well-established in the restoration community. If I wanted, by the way, in the engineer's report, they said it was not eligible for the national register. Uh-uh, it's very eligible, but it probably would not be. They would reject it out of hand if it got simply moved. That's not considered acceptable. It's very much a creature of its site. It's half the point of saving it.
Right. I'd be interested to hear from the architects, who you're going to have a look at it, because I think a creative architect might be able, if you knock down those two buildings in the back, which, if I recall, are pretty decent size, you might be able to kind of find a happy medium and build a modern building sort of attached to it.
It could be like a library or study attached to like a clubhouse that has like more recreational or fun-type uses.
Not that a library's not fun.
Well, there are other examples throughout the town. I mean, you have the C.D. Rich mansion down in White Plains that been repurposed. You'll have the mansion down by, which hotel is that? Off of Skyline Drive, I think it is, down with the U.S. Tennis Association. They preserved that building, and they used that as a congregation area. So it's, you can be creative and repurpose it.
And the record needs, I don't know if you're doing this, I think the planning board assumed you were, and that wasn't going to be a report just merely from the structural engineer and architect, but also an important addressing the historical value of the building. That's right.
That's being done.
Gray?
One further comment. When you mentioned taking apart the building, my blood runs cold. With overdue respect to Toll Brothers, that's not the way you handle a historic building when you restore it. If you don't take it apart, it's more than absolutely necessary. This, to be honest, this is not Toll Brothers' bag. They would have to buy, they don't want to do it themselves. They would have to find a historic architect, someone familiar with this kind of problem, and a contractor to look who's used to this sort of thing and can fix the building up, the way, in fact, Reader's Digest itself did. They did a major renovation in the '50s, and then they put on these additions later on. But they shored up the building. They made sure they wouldn't collapse. They replaced the old posts in the basement, and they made other. They really redid the interior. But they made sure it was built to last. In fact, they don't build it that way anymore. It takes an expert to do that. And if Toll Brothers doesn't really want to do that or get involved with that, all the more reason that you proceed to make. They should find some other site for their clubhouse.
Or incorporate that into the recreation, into the clubhouse area.
Frank?
The phrase clubhouse is just a little vague for me. Could we, could somebody go into more specifics? Is it exactly the use of the building that was intended?
Sure. So, this site's a little unique, right? Because you have light time directly across the streets. across the streets, so normally our amenity centers would have pretty expansive fitness areas, something, you know, congregation space, club room or hub room or something like that, and then bathrooms, locker rooms that would be there for the pools.
For a pool?
For a pool, yeah. So on this particular location, because Lifetime is across the way, we would look to do a much more scaled down, you know, fitness area, and really focus more on just kind of entertaining lifestyle.
And for clarity purposes.
Oh, no, the just, the pool is just for the townhouses and the people who live, it's not for the community as a whole, it's for that community.
That's what I was just going to ask. So it seems to me, and I'm just trying to move things along, it seems to me that there's a desire to preserve the building, keep it where it is, and figure out how to make it work with your recreation facilities for the townhomes.
Yeah, I actually think it makes sense, like that spot for a clubhouse, and maybe once the two buildings in the back are knocked down, we see if the architect can come up with maybe, there might be a good happy medium.
I mean, if it has, it also has industrial kitchen, it could be something that people use for entertaining, you know, there could, there's purposes for it, it's not all of your recreational purposes, but there's, you take away the other two buildings and you could then expand on it.
Yeah, I think if, if you took the approach that, well, we have to maintain the building, we have to keep the building, I don't think that anybody's done that set on your side. The assumption has just been that you can either tear it down, or you can make modifications to it to the extent that it changes the character of it, I don't think that that's anything that, the historic value of it, I don't think is anything that has entered into your judgment on what you're doing here. So if you took another approach and solved it for a different problem, which is you have to maintain the building, you have to keep the building, what could you do? What would be the options? Some of them had been mentioned here. Just take that approach and see what you get out of it.
I would recommend that you take that approach, because from what you're hearing here, I think it would be a very, very heavy lift for you to move forward and change the findings statements and have the building demolished. So if you don't take that away from here, you should, I think that's what you should be hearing.
Can I, can I ask you to put the picture of the building back up again for a second?
You gotta just wake up, just have to wake it up, I think.
The password's there.
Come on, tell us all.
That's your last, what's the password?
12345.
Password.
Password's a band of N's.
So I'd like to actually give a shout out to the architectural review board, if anybody's appeared before them in a, like a home improvement project, as I have, and I know Greg, you've done the same, maybe some of the rest of us have, that is actually a perfect model for what they look for. When they look at, at architecture, that's new buildings that are being done here, renovations that are being done here, siding, six over six windows, lintels, the way these are expressed, a culminated porch, these are things that they actually, that they value as models for the way we want our town to look. And it seems to me that we ought to be valuing this for that very purpose, and I would urge you to find a way to keep the building.
Gray, can I ask you?
Couple of questions for clarification, you're speaking of just that portion of the overall structure?
Yeah, I'm talking about that building, not, not the buildings, the other, the other buildings attached to it.
Not the other two.
And if there were something new that were constructed that looked exactly like this, is that?
No.
Your addition to fit with that look.
Addition too, sure. Right. Gray, did you want to say something?
I just wondered if you wanted to see the ensemble.
The other buildings, that would be helpful.
Oh, the other building, yes.
Thank you.
We gotta translate.
Or did you want to say, say what Gray is?
I don't know if Toll Brothers ever thought of this, but.
Only can do.
Sorry, sorry. Which one, right there.
We should just take it off and pass it on, come on.
Wait, we called.
No, we can pass it around.
It just seems to me that building another fitness center is a little bit redundant on this property, has Toll Brothers reached out to Lifetime and asked, can you dual, do like a membership pricing structure with our new development, because I know that exists in like New York City, I don't know if that would be a possibility for Toll Brothers, just because I can understand like a congregation room and a hangout room for folks who live in the community, but to create another fitness center in Chapel Park Crossing, it just seems a bit redundant to me, that's just.
Yeah, I didn't make the point clearly before, I mean, we're talking about something that, you know, the space that would be the fitness space would be a very modest sized space, this is a space for people who may be intimidated by Lifetime across the street, or just don't feel like, you know, they want something closer for the off, the times where it's snowing, and they're walking next door to just use the facility. It's, by no means is it going to be a substitute for the Lifetime across the street.
Right, okay, well, that's a lot of space right there, those other buildings, seems to me.
Yeah.
May need a garage, so you may have to have a smaller garage or something.
As a commercial site, it is more valuable as an ensemble than a house alone, that would be. Also, I believe it is no longer suitable for a residence, I don't believe anybody would want to live there, right at the entrance to your shopping center, it really belongs to the site of the shopping center.
Well, I, Gray, I think it also belongs to the housing development that's going to be right up against it on the other side, so that's a residential area, and this could possibly be a residential unit, and it would blend in that way as opposed to having the discordance with Lifetime.
Gray, I have a question for you, if, if the building were completely preserved, and they put another building else against the back of it, and use the building as an entranceway to the new building, is that, is that, would that completely destroy the?
Well, that's what in fact the Reader's Digest did.
Okay.
That's, of course, what in fact the Reader's Digest did, that annex in the back is exactly what you're describing.
Okay.
And, and as I say, as a commercial site for offices, it would be desirable to have that, and I think it would also be desirable to have a little service building as well. I don't, I don't frankly see it as a residence, it would be so different from the condos of your companies.
I suggest it is led.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, please go. Let Toll Brothers figure it out, it's not our, it's not our job to figure it out. Yeah, I think we've heard enough comments, we have a lot of other issues. So, thank you, Gray, and.
Thank you very much.
Your committee for coming.
Yep, and I like the commercial thing might work too, instead of residential, if that's what the issue is.
But I guess they're not wanting to move it, I mean, I think this is the right spot to put their book out.
Well, yeah, but not, it's a spot, perhaps on the top of the list.
Does it come right?
The answer, there are other problems.
Then you're definitely in an elevator.
All right, so should we start now at the top of the list?
Yeah.
Well, firstly, for the record, Mark Weingarten, counsel to the applicant, is it okay, we have a presentation that we think there's some context that's necessary, as opposed to going one by one, that might be helpful, and if that's okay, we would like to do that.
How long would it be?
A few minutes, but Andy?
I can approve slides in 12 minutes.
So 15 minutes, where we go through and hit all the issues that are on the table, we'd like to believe, so if we could, we've submitted a draft petition, as was mentioned earlier, essentially for amendments to the zoning code, which do two things, one, it legalizes existing conditions which have been created as part of the construction of the shopping center, the 200 building, the other commercial elements that preceded the East Village, and the second, permits the approval of opposed subwoodyards and site plan, which are taking shape in the final phase of the project known as the East Village. And as was mentioned, there's a memo of September 20, where it was set forth as two tables, and effectively, it breaks down and that, within those two particular styles, all of the issues that appear to be remaining are those that impact the ability to build out of the East Village, so we're going to concentrate on those for this. Just to go back quickly, because again, we all know this is a long history, we're going to do it very, just very succinctly, in May of 2015, after a series of interim steps, the town board amended the zoning map to rezone 19.1 acres from BRO 20 to OPR, and approved the retail PDCP. The town will also increase the MFPD district, otherwise known as the East Village, to 31.2 acres, and approved the 2015 MFPD PDCP that we've been speaking about. In December of that year, it approved certain other amendments to the MFPD PDCP, including moving the affordable units over to the 200 building from the East parcel. Effectively, what we have is a, an approval which contemplates, as you know, 620,000 feet of commercial, 120 of retail, 500 of office, the affordable housing units in the 200 building and the residential units there, and 91 townhomes at the East Village. In November of 2016, the applicant contracted with Toll Brothers to develop the East Village, this is after the, the PDCP was adopted. Toll Brothers, as you've heard, is one of the leading home builders in the U.S., and they applied their expertise to creating this, this area here for luxury condominiums in your town. After nearly a year of work with Toll Brothers on developing a site plan for the East Village, a formal application was submitted in September of 2017 for site plan approval before the planning board. Over the past two years, a series of five planning board meetings, which specifically to the East Village, took place, also during that two-year period, nearly two dozen meetings took place with town staff and others, town staff, its professionals, et cetera, specific responses were submitted, submissions were made, specific responses were there, and as I mentioned, on five occasions, we have now submitted changes to our site plan, which come out of that iterative process. The major issues which were addressed had to do with site grading, burbs, the appropriate level of the loop road, circulation and parking, including roadway widths and driveway lengths, townhomes and clubhouse designs, including but not limited to, location of the units, unit footprints, the need for basements, bedroom count for some of the units, the auditorium parcel and its boundary lines. We believe that this plan that is now before you for the site plan for the East Village is in substantial conformance with the approved 2015 MFPD PDCP, and I put the emphasis on preliminary and concept, and we'll talk about that in a moment. And do you have the overlay plan? Sure. So just to give you a general sense, and Andy's going to take you through the specifics of this in a moment, what you see in, in red is the approved plan for the preliminary development concept plan, and what you see in blue is our site plan. And this map, we think, shows very succinctly that we are substantially in conformance with that plan. Now, there have been a few changes made, and you'll hear the rationale for it as we've gone through, and that is what happens with a conceptual plan when you get to the reality of a site plan. So for example, see this change here was made because there was concern about this being too close to your auditorium parcel, which you wanted to get a little bit larger, so we moved some of the units away from there for noise complaints and other possibilities. That then shifted these units up top to go a little bit farther out this way, to be able to create the same number of units, just giving you a sense that that's the kind of back and forth that's been taking place over the last two years. So what we believe at this point, and the planning board is here to speak for themselves, is that we have reached a general consensus on the majority of the issues that I just went through in this two-year process with the planning board. What is before you is a petition for the relief of the town board that would be necessary in order for us to be able to get the approval to build this, and that's what we're here to discuss today, is we'll go through those specifics. So Andy's going to take you through the specific issues now.
Mark, do we actually have that petition at this point?
There is a draft petition that came in.
Right, but we don't have a petition from, we have a draft petition.
Correct, that's why we're having the work session, and if we are in, and Les mentioned this early, if we come to a general consensus of what it will look like, then we will go through the process of finalizing that petition and formally submitting it, of course, there are going to be public hearings and process that have to take place after this gets done, and that's why we are in a work session environment.
Right, but since we're making records here, I just wanted to make that statement clear that we have a draft petition, we do have a petition.
Correct.
And the point that I would like to add is that, not disagreeing with what Marcus said, but I think what Sabrina has really effectively done is distill those issues which the town board needs to focus on, that's what we have this list for.
Correct, I think it'd be great if we just go through that list for the sake of expediency, and also, in that note, I, you know, consistent with what you're saying, you guys have been working with the planning board for two years, and I personally will be looking to the planning board to hear your positions where there's been consensus, there might be some changes that have been made due to planning board suggestions, and unless you guys make that clear to us, you know, here we are then maybe second guessing something that you guys suggested, they've changed for you, and now we're like second guessing it because we don't know the history.
We wouldn't do that.
We wouldn't do it, no. That sort of history, I think, is important for some of these 15 items, the history of it, how it came to be, you know. So.
Agreed.
Andy, what are you doing, you going through the whole, all the changes or just the 15?
Well, I was going to touch on the 15 items in the context of an overall presentation, because I think it's difficult to isolate, you isolate them, because the pieces, the concept plan, as I'll go through in a moment, I'll take 10 minutes.
Yeah, fine. We're down to 12. Keep it moving.
Go back to the concept.
But I think we really just want to focus on the 15, so maybe if you could just focus on the 15.
So 2015 MFPD PDCP preliminary development concept plan, 91 townhomes arranged such that they face either the main road, which cuts through the East Village, the entry road to the loop road, they either face on that, or they face on open space or shared pedestrian paths, as developed in conjunction with the planning board in 2014 and 2015, under the TND, traditional neighborhood design, precepts. We go to now 2019, the plan is basically the same, 91 townhomes, circulation remains the same, they continue to face on open space, the main road or shared paths, with garages accessed in the rear of what are now called common service drives, but are also called alleys in TND nomenclature. The area to the east, which has a pond and an adjacent wetland, has not been injured into or further disturbed, so we believe that overall, if you look at the plans together, and if you go to the next slide, that is then the overlay of where the buildings are today in blue, where they were previously in red, the road remains the same, and basically, what's happened over those two years is a refinement of the plan based on more detail at the site level, and also more detail at the building level, resulting from the entry of Toll, who has now the experience, the local experience, the marketing know-how, and the design know-how to be the real plans that people are going to want to buy, and that will be part of this community, as opposed to the conceptual plans from 2015. Not only has 2019 changed, and James can go into that, as to how the so-called empty nesters are bringing the stuff from their empty nest to the new location, and they need room for that stuff, where there's larger kitchens, larger entertainment spaces, basements, or other facilities, so that our buildings have grown a little bit from what was shown in the concept plan, that was one of the items, the growth of the buildings. So go to the next plan. So these are the, the different areas where the plan has changed. Basically, it's the site itself of the East Village, the buildings, the site roads and driveways or pavements, and the auditorium. So I'll touch on those four broad categories by looking at these different areas, and what we're showing you is, is kind of a snapshot of various plans that we've reviewed through the planning board during those two years. So the planning board members will likely recognize all of these drawings, you've not seen them yet, and I just bring them here as an example of what we've been doing in that iterative process. Next slide. So the buildings, the buildings have grown in size, I just mentioned why generally that's occurred, it's gone from the concept plan. It's gone from the concept plan to now a specific builder's actual plans based on experience in Westchester in 2019. These are 2019 plans to be built and marketed in 2020 and 2021. So, the time has shifted. The amount of room that people are seeking to buy has grown, as I mentioned, because of those spaces, not because there are going to be more people in that space, but unfortunately because there's going to be more stuff in that space and stuff that people like to bring with them as they move from single-family homes. Next slide. We've shown, we've been asked by the planning board, well, show us other plans, and I will distribute this as part of our submission. Show us the sizes of other buildings you've built. So, we have here the proposed, starting from the bottom, the MFPD PDCP drawing plans, which average 2,250 square feet between the units. The East Village plan today, between the different types of units, we now have master up and master down, that master bedrooms on the ground floor as well as the second floor. There are more people now that want master bedrooms on the ground floor than there were even back in 2014, 2015. Toll has built similar units for the enclave at Pleasantville not far from here and Valeria and Cortland Manor, James was referring to that just a little while ago. Those are a little bit smaller than the Chapala Crossing East Village plan. They've also built the enclave at Rybro. Those units are a little bit larger, so those range, average 2,900. Today, we are averaging 2,550, and enclave at Pleasantville is 2,280 as opposed to 2,250.
These are all attached?
So, there's a variety.
Are those examples all attached?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, there is a tendency since 2014 for a larger unit, and our builder, based on their experience today, their current experience says this is what the market is seeking. Second item, roads and pavement. The 2015 PDCP had 20-foot roads. All the roads, alleys and the main road were 20 feet wide. That's in concert with the precept for TND that roads are to be balanced with pedestrian and open space. So, those roads, the TND roads, are narrower than those in conventional subdivision regulations. We met several times with town staff and the fire department in order to figure out how best to serve, how the emergency services could serve this community and in balance with the TND precepts. What we've developed in concert with the fire department is that the main road, Road A, shown in blue, is 24 feet wide. That 24 feet width is sufficient based on the actual equipment that both available in town and from the Mount Kisco, the Mount Kisco tower ladder truck to be able to stage within this community or any community that serves by mutual aid. Within the alleys, which are typically narrower because they only serve the buildings that have garages fronting on them, there's no through traffic in the alley. If you're going through the community, you're following the blue road, the only reason you're going on the pink roads is to get to the garages at the back of those units. Those have a width of 20 feet plus two additional feet on either side, who are now effective width of 24 feet stabilized to allow for the fire truck to stage there. If you go to the next slide. We looked specifically with the fire department at how that staging of the fire truck would work at various locations within the community just to double check whether those standards, as developed and applied to this site, would work for them. And we've come, after a series of work sessions, we believe we came to that conclusion that they did. Next slide please. We also looked at the operations for these roadways. These areas in blue are snow storage areas, so that when the snow is of a size or of a depth that it needs to be moved off the side of the street, it can be located in these areas. And we've developed a snow operations protocol that would be overseen by the homeowners association and the property management group so that people who were parking on the street or in on-grade spaces would know when and how to move their cars so that they could be plowed out. There will be no basic resident parking on the streets because each resident, each townhouse has an interior garage for its cars. I'll go through that in a moment, but in fact, and because of the driveway configuration, you can't park in your driveway. I'll go through that in a moment. But that's also better for snowplowing because there are no driveways than that have cars that can't, that get blocked in because they can't be plowed during a snow event. Next slide. So, we are very conscious as a group of the desire to maintain the coverage, both building coverage and site coverage requirements of the MFPD, and also to stay within the overall envelope of that plan. And so, part of the planning of these units, which has run bigger in footprint, is that the driveways that are proposed are no longer driveways in which cars can sit, but they're aprons that give you access to the garage. So, the aprons in the driveways are eight to 12 feet long as opposed to 16 to 18 feet as they were in the PDCP plan. And we looked at this in great detail with planning board and staff to figure out what does that mean for a number of things, like site distance. It's actually better for site distance as people back out of their garages because there are no cars in adjoining driveways that would otherwise block your view of the road behind. We looked at...
And what about pedestrians then?
Pedestrians, this is, pedestrians are walking on the front sides of the building, right? Because the buildings, the front doors of the buildings are facing the street or the shared pedestrian walkways. If you're walking on the alley to your garage, then yes, there may be pedestrians there. Pedestrian focus is at the front of the building, as is the public focus.
Andy, I don't mean to cut you off, but maybe we could just, I mean, like, this driveway conversation would be perfect when we're, when that, that number, number five.
Yes, but I think it's worthwhile, and you can stop me if you want, but I think it's worthwhile to see all of these things in context, and then perhaps go back to the individual items and say, okay, as an individual item, here's where it fits in the whole big picture, and here's what we do with that.
The thing is that some of these may not be controversial, and we could bang through them, and then we may wind up spending a lot of time on something that is controversial. So, personally, I'd rather just allocate the time to those things that are controversial as opposed to some of the other things.
I agree to a certain point that, given that you have, you know...
I have three minutes left.
You've got three minutes. Finish.
Next slide please.
It was more than 10 minutes, we're saying. Just for the record.
So, the planning board asked Toll, well, have you done this in other places? And Toll has provided a series of examples of other situations where there are no driveways in back of the townhomes. You get direct access to the garages, and there are no streets blocking, or no cars in the driveway blocking your way. So, you can see that here, this is just two of the examples that were provided. Next slide please. And you can see that here. These in fact have no aprons. The garages face one another. It's basically a service alley. That's the old-fashioned alley where the garage, the garbage cans and the trucks came in the alley, everyone else came out front, walked out front. This is not what we're proposing. We're proposing eight to 11 feet aprons, so that you do have more room, but this is just to show that this does work, this is in Pennsylvania. Next slide. We also looked at parking. Okay, if you're not going to have garage parking in your driveway, is there sufficient parking on the sides? Each townhome has two interior garage spaces. These are the on-grade spaces, there are 115 on-grade spaces. Between the garage spaces and the on-grade spaces, we exceed the MFPD requirement by 100 spaces. There is not going to be a shortage of parking on the site. Next slide. The other extension that we did to the road was Road H, which is a northern Moth Road. As Mark briefly pointed out, we relocated two townhomes from adjoining the auditorium and one townhome here to create another cluster of three, which extended out to Road H. That's another reason for the incremental increase in impervious area. Next slide. The fourth item that changed was the auditorium, the auditorium parcel and its surroundings. The auditorium parcel grew from 0.7 acres in the PDCP to 1.1 acres in this plan, in great part due to the improvements, the site improvements that the town board or the PAC have proposed to install, including accessible spaces on the south side, redoing of the plaza and the stairs to the live road and additional pathways. So, that was part of the impetus for the change in project size, the additional, and the additional other changes that were related. The last thing I want to talk about is the loop road adjoining the auditorium, which is to the north. Next slide. So, in conjunction with the grading, looking at the grading of the East Village adjoining the loop road and the auditorium, it was decided with the planning board's help to raise the profile of the existing loop road. This loop road exists today and adjoins the parking lot to the office, and if you ever drive on this, you may notice that there's a little dip in the middle as you approach the auditorium. The purpose of the regrading is to remove that dip, which helps the overall circulation of the entire facility. It also reduces the height of the adjoining wall here, and it makes for a reduction in fill overall. So, that was a coordinated solution that solved a number of problems related to areas joining the auditorium. It did increase the disturbance, site disturbance, because this loop road was not to be touched in either the office plan or the residential plan. So, that's the type of change that's developed over the past two years in workshops, in public sessions, and in staff sessions that we believe make this both a workable plan and consistent with the PDCP.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, so, the first four, well, those items, I'd say, ready to proceed for review. I think these are really well illustrated. I think it's the 15 on the next page that are termed items to be further discussed.
But I think what the planning board has done is basically said that all this information that the applicant has presented over a period of time has resulted in the current site plan. And the planning board is conceptually okay with those elements of that plan, except for these items, which they believe either are in the town board's ultimate determination or there is a lack of consensus at this point at the planning board as to how these issues should be handled. That's why this is...
Fair enough. So, number one, amendment to the boundary for the, just amending the sidelines, the boundary of the MFPD. Okay with that?
Again, just to understand from what I just saw, that means another 1.5 acres are being disturbed, but doesn't necessarily mean it's concrete.
I mean, it's going from red to blue.
You're just pushing out, you're just pushing out, it could still be green if it was green before, just to accommodate a couple units.
That's correct.
Because Chapack took more space than we needed, so it did push out.
Shifted.
So, we're okay with number one?
But so, why does the blue extend so far beyond? So...
As per your opportunity, this unit that pushed out.
Yep.
And also to maintain the compliance with site coverage and development coverage that's in the MFPD.
Is that because the footprints of the units got bigger?
Yes, the footprints of the units got bigger and the...
Chapack.
The whole paving got a little bit bigger.
Is the planning board okay with this, number one?
I think we're okay with this.
So, I think the direction is, rather than the town board saying they're okay with this, why just that the applicant should proceed with the petition on this issue.
I understand, but I want to get, I personally would like to get guidance from the planning board because you guys have been living with this for two years.
Yep.
So, I think we're fine with it.
Really? Yeah, I think we're good until we see the final thing in.
I understand. Nobody's bound by anything. Blastrous. Number two, amendments to the MFPD regarding addition nine bedrooms. Now, this one...
I'm assuming it's not a planning board.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it is, was a planning board suggestion. I could be wrong, I wasn't part of it, that some of the ones, some of the units were pushed out to tighten more with the retail, make it more traditional neighborhood design.
I think it's, it was really the applicant's response to a number of issues, but it's really, it's really coming from the applicant. We didn't ask for or look for an extra nine. We've looked at it, I think, fairly carefully, and we've had a couple of meetings on it, and I think in the end, based on information we have from schools, et cetera, I thought, the members should speak for themselves, but I think the consensus of the board was we were okay with that. And we looked at this fairly, I think, over a number of meetings. And the bottom line is, I think the planning board was okay with the additional nine that the applicants proposed. And it was for a number of reasons. It was, you know, the appearance, the grade, and also market, you know, marketing, they wanted more three bedrooms as opposed to two bedrooms. So, it was a combination of factors once again, but I think overall, we were satisfied that it would not be a, it would not have an adverse impact.
My question was sort of combining two and seven together.
Speak, by the way, obviously.
We'll, I'm sure it chirped in if we disagree.
Sure you will, I hope you will.
I think you have to look at two and seven together, you know, in no particular order. We were looking that the average size was about 2,556, went up to about 2,860 for the units from 2,250 to 2,400. I have a three-bedroom home that's less than 2,860, I have a three-bedroom home that's probably about 2,556. My, the reason why I bring that up is, Rob, you have sort of discussed, and we kind of agree, walkability is important when you're marketing something now, it seems to be the trend. And if I'm a Brooklyn hipster, not just a empty nester, I see this and I see, wow, I can walk to Chapala Crossing, I can walk a lifetime, I have a pool, I have no maintenance. So, to say this is really a marketing to empty nesters, when the home's the size of mine, if not bigger, with all these benefits, I think certainly it's something that's going to be marketed to, if not marketed, going to catch the eye of not just an empty nester.
You will have made it, you will have...
Well, different kind, like I don't have to mow my...
Oh, more than...
Right, no, I understand that, I understand that, correct. But the other benefits there as well. So, I saw, for example, we asked last week, or I asked about the Grafflin School District, not just the entire school district, and we got some statistics back from 2009 until today, that's somewhat inconsequential. I'd be curious what the trend has been in the past few years, if I recall. But my concern is that you are going to hurt the market for homes that are already there, that are in the Grafflin area, that are three-bedroom homes, that are 2,800 square feet, 2,500 square feet. And while I want you to succeed, and make no mistake despite that I'm challenging you on things, I don't know if it's really our role to make sure you get peaked and top dollar for your job, for your construction. We want you to succeed because that's our success too, but I, I'm just, I have real concerns about, I don't believe that it only adds three more kids, and I don't believe for that matter, when you add that much space, and I'll give Greg the credit for this, I think it was in your email, where even if it's prevented from being a bedroom, that extra 300 or 400 square feet of that basement, is the infrastructure in place that if and when it becomes that, and we can't count that because people are doing it secretively, can the infrastructure of this community maintain an extra bedroom for every few units, an extra person for every few units, that you're not expecting because technically you're not allowed to do so? So, these are my concerns, and I'm just sort of voicing them randomly, but my concerns about the expansion, if you will, of an extra unit and an extra square footage.
Well, in that vein, in one of our last meetings, we said there will be no bathrooms allowed on the bottom floor in the basement. You have a wash basin if you wanted to do your laundry down there. Another way to do it, you might even say there shall be no accessory apartment down there, period. That gives the inspectors an opportunity to go in and correct things, and, you know, it's, in a way, we want to make sure that people don't take advantage, but on the other hand, we don't, I don't think, want to say that, gee, everybody is gonna, you know, screw with this and...
No, I don't think everyone will, but I think we also be realist and think how many people in this community probably do work. I was a town prosecutor, I saw people coming doing work all the time, that wasn't, they got caught. So, let's be realist here. And my 14-year-old son, or 12-year-old son, doesn't need a shower downstairs, he can wash his hands if he decides to brush his teeth at 14, that's a whole separate story to be talking about that, but he can go upstairs and shower, you know, so I think it's neither here nor there.
I'm sorry, what's not?
I'm saying, I'm having like the shower or something.
No, I didn't say shower. It would be just a wet basin so that you could do your laundry down there. No bathroom should be allowed on the, in the basement floor, period.
Right, that's my, that's my point. Yeah, my point is it wouldn't really make a difference for a kid, they would just walk upstairs anyway. Yeah, so, so, so that's why my concern is, is the infrastructure going to be there? And again, I don't want to steal, I believe it's, Greg, that, not what you set forth, that's my take home for it.
That was one of the comments, I was saying that, my comment was more geared on the basements. A concern I had was that if there's 91 basements, some portion of those basements will or may eventually end up with a bedroom in it, and if you add that up, if you have extra people... And if you add that up, if you have extra people living each unit, what does that do to sewer, what does that do to schools, what does that do to traffic, and what does it do to lost taxes that that town aren't recouping because now these are three and four bedroom townhomes?
Correct.
And not two and three bedroom townhomes.
Well, I, I still, I'm still stuck on where I was, that, that, okay, you ban bedrooms, you ban accessory apartments, you ban, you know, bathrooms and everything else, and then you set up something where there's a requirement for at least the first 10 or 15 years, that the houses are inspected every four or five years to see what's happened. And then they can all go to the prosecutor, prosecutor at the time and see if they can talk their way past what they've done. You know, so I think that it's, that's, I understand the thing about stuff.
Stuff is a gift because there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, we have so much stuff, and some of it's the kids and I can't get them to take it away and yell at me if I destroy it, so, but it, it's all there and it's, I don't know how else to do it.
Well, but one thing is, you know...
I do have another idea, excuse me. One is make the bathrooms, uh, sorry, the, the downstairs half the size. You have a utility room for the furnace and everything else, and then they have storage and just make it half the size.
I have some personal experience on this because I'm, I have two older brothers and my oldest brother, when he turned 15, he moved into the basement because he didn't want to have anything to do with the rest of the family. And it was miserable down there. I mean, it was like a real basement and the only window was sort of one of these little sort of lights that, you know, hit for, and he, he loved it down there, he set up his own little life down there. And I, I tend to think that, that I agree with Greg, is that it's almost an invitation for this kind of thing to happen. And it almost doesn't matter how big the basement is, if you can get a bed in there, then somebody might, is, is, there's a possibility that somebody's going to move in down there. And so one of the questions that I, I keep, I hear the discussion and the argument over and over again about, this is what the market demands, this is who we have to sell to because they won't buy anything else. And I, I'm just not a fan of that argument because people are developing homes all over this county, which don't meet these criteria, they're developing them, they're selling them. This is just the market, and my, my question would be, and my observation would be, because I've asked this question many times, I'll just make the observation again, that this is who you have decided you want to sell to, this is the market you want to sell to. But the, but the market for housing in this county is not that narrowly defined, I, I just know that's true. And so my question would be, my observation would be, I don't know why we should invite this kind of a, of a potential problem. The tax thing is very interesting. Why should, we should invite this, when, if you, if you provide a different product, people are going to buy it, I mean, I'm just, I'm certain of that. Maybe a different price point, maybe a different profit, but...
Well, look, that's where the rubber meets the road, right? We are America's luxury home builder. We have been contracted to build a luxury product on this site. That's, that's what we do and that's who we are. So I'm up here telling you, in order to, to market the homes that we build, this is what we need to do to be successful.
So let me ask you a question. Does every home, every luxury home that you guys develop and sell, does it meet these criteria? Does it have, does, could, could you take one of these floor plans? Because I've seen, I've, I've visited some of your products, and they are different than what you are proposing here, right?
If you can give me a specific, I can, I can...
Well, there's, there's one up in, there's one up above Croton, what's the name of that one?
The Croton Manor, Valeria.
Valeria.
Sure, so the most, most popular house of Valeria is a model called a Bucknell. If you flip to your sheet, Bucknell's a 32-foot wide by 69-foot wide deep home that everyone expands to be 72 feet deep because they want to push the master bedroom out. That house is somewhere around 2,600, 2,700 square feet. On that site, about 50% of the houses we sell, our customers purchase finished lower levels. They also desire walkout basins because they want to build entertainment spaces into their basins. We built, if you walked into the model home of that project and went downstairs, there's a full-blown wet bar, pool table, media room, the whole nine, because that's what this, that's what the market is looking for.
What about the ones over here on Washington Avenue?
Same models, right? So a little bit different of a, a site conditions there, where you have an uphill portion of the job, which is the three-story units at Phasius Street, and then you have the units that backed Washington Avenue. So the units that backed Washington Avenue, very similar product. Worth noting, when we build, used to build, you know, back six, seven years ago, we would design our jobs so our end units, right, the units that, that bookend the building were 32 feet wide, and the units that were sandwiched in the middle, we call the interiors, most of our product was 28-foot wide. We don't do that anymore. So we'll, we'll be 32 on the ends and 34 in the center because that's what the market's demanding. The uphill side of that project, the three-story town's completely different animal, right? So you, you're marketing to a completely different buyer because that buyer has to be willing to accept a lifestyle that has three levels of living area. They're coming into a garage and a rec space down in the lower level, walking up to their main living area that has their living room, dining room, kitchen, and then their bedrooms being on the third floor of that home.
So...
So you have two very different buyers on that job, right? The uphill side, you're marketing much more to a predominantly young professional, while the downhill side is your, you know, kind of stereotypical empty nester, someone who's downsizing from a, a home within...
So two different products on the same...
Two different buyers.
Right, two different products for two different buyers, and two different sizes of units?
So the uphill side, by nature, you just, because you have a little bit of a, not wasted space, but like, you know, additional space down below, those units are about 2,800 square feet, 2,900 square feet. But the downhill side units, yeah, the most popular unit again is 2,600 to 2,700 square feet.
I wanted to go back to one thing, and that was...
Also worth noting there, there are no bedrooms, right, we don't, we don't have bedroom restrictions there. So that allows us to build a three and four bedroom home on the uphill side to attract a young professional. Whereas here, look, the limiting factor here to the market is, let's cut to the chase, it's a bedroom restriction. If you are selling predominantly two-bedroom homes, people with families are not buying two-bedroom homes. It doesn't happen. When I have no bedroom restrictions, Valeria being, when I have no age restriction, right, Valeria being a perfect example, no age restriction, all two-bedroom restriction, I'm selling the job to all empty nesters. There's no age restriction. But, you know, families are not, are not in the market for a two-bedroom home. Where I have the, where I have full access to the market, three to four bedrooms per, per home, it's a solid 50-50 split for this type of, for this type of home. Just because there, you're going to always attract people who want low maintenance living, but you're still going to have families like me. I have three kids, I lived in this on a 50 by 100 postage stamp lot in White Plains. It wasn't the house that we outgrew, it was the yard, because my kids are animals and they're, you know, they're breaking the neighbor's window next door, so you had, we went to a house that had a yard. But that's how this product works. When, when they're, when you, when you have no restrictions on bedrooms or, or design criteria, and you just put this market, this product out to market, you're going to get a 50-50 split on either side of the, the age demographic.
So, so we can make some progress, can we go back to number two? I know we've mixed in with basements and overall, what might happen? Is there any issue though with...
So I want to remind the board about the genesis for, the, the request for the nine additional bedrooms on number two. If you remember, it was this area up front here, our initial, because of the site grading, remember, our initial site plan actually had all these buildings rotated counterclockwise, nine bedrooms. And it was the board's strong opinion and desire to orientate the site back to what was consistent with the MFPD.
Right.
Is doing so, because the grade climbs up this way, we lost the ability to transition grade through the building area. If, if buildings were oriented in this direction, right, I can now step my units in between where I can now kind of move with, with the, with the ground, with the land. Because I'm turning those perpendicular to the grade, all that transitioning grade happens in the garage. So now I have a two-bedroom unit with potential three-foot drop slab that produces eight to 10 steps from someone's garage to their first floor. Somebody who's looking for a first floor master bedroom home is, which is predominantly someone who's better accepting of a two-bedroom home, is not going to be accepting of climbing eight to 10 steps to get from their car to their kitchen. It's not, it's just, they're not going to be accepting of it.
Right, and that's what I was going to, or step number two here, or point number two, was just on the nine bedrooms, and that's, that's great that you actually gave us the history because again, the planning board worked with the applicant on this, it was the result of those conversations. So it wasn't that we just increased nine across the board, it was really specifically solving a problem that we had in that southwest corner. So again, from that standpoint, and when we, we went through this at great length with the applicant, back and forth, the nine came out of that. So I think from our standpoint, the nine per se is not a problem, and this is something I think we could support. The issue of the basements is another issue, so we're blending those at this point, but the issue of the nine, I think, which is point number two, I think we were okay with that and we supported that, in fact, we sort of instructed them to, to, to give us that solution during the conversation. The basement is another issue, you know, combining, you know, combining...
I'm trying to go, so listen...
I know, okay.
So listen, number three, we talked about, right? Number four, that, a lot of these changes are because of number four, so I think we're okay. You guys have been dealing with the boundary for chap pack and, right, that's why most of these changes have, a lot of these changes have occurred, right? Are we okay with number four?
Yeah, a lot of, and I think the issue on, on the chap pack at this point, and we've looked at this, we've looked at two alternatives, I think we were okay with either of those, and I think where we left it was we were leaving it back to the chap pack for them to come back and let us know operationally what's optimal for you. Exactly, okay. And I think we can work with either one.
Yeah, ultimately, we may as well have to prove the sub.
Yeah. The question here, though, it says more information the applicant regarding the modifications requested should be provided. Do we have more information?
There were requests for certain additions to be made, which we, to the auditorium parcel, which we have said, I don't know what the disinformation is, that we were unwilling to do at that point, that we were not willing to do those particular requests that were made with regard to the, there were a number of requests that we did agree to, but there were other ones that were part of a letter that came in, I have a letter in front of me, there were requests that were made for additional improvements to the property which...
So which ones did you agree to, just for clarity's sake?
You reported changes from the auditorium parcel.
And then while you're looking at...
I know, it was the handicapped spaces, I mean, there were a number of things that changed.
And then while you're speaking of handicapped access, I know we were talking about cutting down that berm, which I don't see happening, so, and doing a pass, a walk...
The berm is going away.
Can we quote you on that?
A minute.
And is there, is there going to be a walkway from the parking lot through it or across it now? Because it's going to go away, because it's going to completely go away and be flat.
I would suggest that if, if our, if your acceptance of this parcel boundary is tied to those improvements, and I think that there should be some consideration of what those improvements are in connection to the parking lot, that we see drawings for that and that, that the town board and the planning board have a chance to understand what your real intentions are.
I'm sorry, see drawings for what?
You're asking about how the walkway is going to go.
About the car running the walkway.
Essentially the off, the difference that are off-site to your parcel that connect you to the, to the parking lot. We should see some drawings of that so that we're satisfied that, that it's going to work.
Okay. This is a, a study that we did at the request of the planning board. With the, with the configuration that you saw of the auditorium with the accessible parking on the south side, it appeared to us that the best place to drop off somebody if they needed accessible route to the front door is to pull into that accessible parking and take the sidewalk that's right here right to the front door. If you were going to park in the main lot, the office lot, don't you? Believe that the safest place to pull off is to pull into the lot and then anywhere along this sidewalk, drop somebody off and they'll walk across at the new reconfigured landing and up the new stairs to the level of the plaza. There was a question, well, couldn't people drop off here at the base of the stairs? There's no longer, because we changed, made this change to have accessibility direct from the side, there's no longer, at one point, we studied a ramp coming up here, but the ramp is no longer there.
Right.
So you have to come up the stairs. And to our view, it would be preferable if people didn't stop in the middle of the Loop Road.
I agree.
And we did study the possibility, okay, if we had that here, could you get a new connection into the parking lot so you didn't have to go all the way down and around to get into the parking lot? And you can do that, and we've shown that here. What it does is it adds some impervious area, it takes out three parking spaces, and now you, I think, encourage people to stop here and drop off when there are two better, we believe, spaces to do that. So that could be done, we don't recommend that it is.
Well, I think, but what if that was...
And if it's no longer a berm.
Okay, so what's not a berm, so where that, kind of where that car is that you have stopping right in front of the stairs, shouldn't there be a walkway, not a road, a walkway through what is still going to be that grassy area, even if it's not a raised grassy area? Because if you do, I mean, it's kind, it's a hill. It's a hill, getting into the parking lot, if you're walking from the parking lot...
There's a six-foot change from here to here. We can't change the six-foot change.
No, I'm not asking you to change, I'm asking if instead of having people walk around and up the hill, if it's possible to put a walkway through that grassy area, even if it's no longer a hill.
You can put as many walkways as you like. Right, now we have two walkways, and at this point, you can get to this entire lot. Yes, you could put another walkway here to get to these, perhaps more conveniently aimed spaces.
To the whole lot, there's only one way in and out of that lot.
Well, that's why we're proposing that second move.
There's a way up there.
Most, anybody really who's parking there, they don't know how to go to that other way all the way over there. So, well, you do, I'm assuming you do. There's really only one in and out, so to have pedestrians walking in the same route where all the cars are going in and out, if there's anything going on there, it might be safer to have just a pedestrian walkway through that grassy area.
You could add a walk there.
Just so people can walk, it's safer.
So I think the planning board, if, do you guys like this one that's up here?
I don't.
You live with you not?
I, I, I don't, if I could just ask a couple of questions. Andy, I understand the logic of if you have handicapped people who need to be dropped off, that you get them up to the level of the building. I, I got that, and that makes perfect sense to me. But for the rest of us who aren't handicapped, who maybe are seven years old and would rather be dropped off in front of the building, or who are in a rush, or for whatever reason, what's the resistance? Forget the ramp for a minute, just forget the ramp, from the road, right? Because you're already dealing with the handicapped in the upper level lot. What's the resistance just to put, to put a layby there in front where it says entry plaza? Yes, so the cars can pull off and people can get in and out, right? And then they could, and then the driver can just pull into the parking lot. What's the resistance of, because I believe people will be stopping there to drop off.
Especially in bad weather.
It's an invitation for people to stop to drop off. What's the resistance just to put a layby in there so that they can do that in the comfort of not being in the, in the way of traffic? When an event happens, hopefully there's going to be a lot of traffic, and I think there is, because I've been to some of these events. Why not do that?
Is a layby an area where you pull into?
It's just a lane.
You pull over.
Okay.
People like two cars coinciding in it. I think it's just balancing, Tom. Clearly you could put a layby here. We already have a, a, entry to the parking lot here with a walkway, walkway provided to get to the balance of the parking lot.
Yeah, but then, but then people have to, if they're getting off at either of those places, they have to cross the road to get to the, I'm, I'm asking you, what's, what's the resistance? I understand you have two other places to do it, but why not put it? I guess I, I guess I'd suggest that there's a little bit more work to do here. It sounds like, so you, you have some thoughts that aren't being met in the drawing?
Well, the work is on the other side, not on the boundaries of chap pack. We're actually okay with the boundaries of chap pack? It's, it's kind of, now, my, what I thought, I didn't think that the second proposed entrance into the parking lot was going to be there. I thought it was going to be much further down, like when you guys were doing construction and you closed off the, this entrance, you had like a separate entrance, kind of at the end of the dip, right at the end of that parking lot? That, I, that's where I thought we were proposing it, because then if anyone's in That, I, that's where I thought we were proposing it, because then if anyone's in the lot, all the way on that end, or-
But the dip is no more.
You can go through. No, no, that entrance isn't there anymore.
As, as we are there today.
No, but the dip is no more because of the, the raising of the loop road.
I'm just, for purposes of, of describing where it is, is why I'm saying the dip.
Andy, though, to Lisa's point, if you go to the right, there's a place where the loop road and the existing parking lot pretty much reconcile in the corner.
That's going to be raised 10 feet.
You're going to raise that point up there too?
Yeah, 10 feet. That's where, that's where the dip goes, out of the loop road.
That eliminates that.
So then you're adding another berm? What's being raised 10 feet?
That's that section.
The road.
The road.
That reduces the wall.
You no longer go dip and come back out. You just come, it's a slight grade, and then you come back out.
Right, I was just thinking it was helpful to make an entrance into the parking lot over there, so you're not having people come in and out of one entrance into the parking lot. Forgetting, I wasn't focusing on people dropping off, I was focusing on just the movement of traffic within the parking lot, and allowing people, if anyone, if anyone passes that entrance, they now have to either turn around in the loop road, doing a K-turn, which I've seen people, many people do, because they pass it and go, oh, there it was, and they'll do a K-turn, or they have to drive all the way around, or somehow circle around somewhere. So that extra entrance, I thought, was actually quite hel, and exit was quite helpful. But not, I wasn't thinking there, I was thinking much further, nor, nor.
That entrance that's shown on there, is that possible, that's possible to be raising a loop road, right?
Yeah, that's possible.
So you'd have your second entrance, you put in your, whatever that thing is called, let's move on to the next one.
Lay-by? Yeah, I was just thinking, if Andy was worried about it being there, I was happy with it actually further down.
Yeah, but that's not going to happen, because they're raising the loop road. So at least you're going to have a second entrance, and people can move into that lay thing, and, and then still, rather than have to go all the way around, they can move into the, pull into the second entrance.
It seems like it solves a lot of the problems.
So could I ask a question here about this? If, to do the lay-by that I'm suggesting here, that's actually an improvement on town property, right? It would be an improvement on town property.
Right.
And it would be something that the town could decide to do on their own, because it's on their parcel, right?
I mean, I actually don't love the idea right in front of the steps, because then any actual pedestrian who's trying to walk in there, now is in the middle of a road, having to navigate a car that is completely blocking their route to the stairs.
Well, it doesn't have to happen right in front.
So, yeah.
I think it needs to be looked at.
We can play around with that.
So I guess I'm suggesting that maybe this, this really is not, I don't know, do you use the lawyer term, dispositive to this discussion?
The boundaries are fine, but we'll play around with it.
The boundaries are fine.
Tom's idea for the lay thing, and-
We can look at that, but it doesn't affect the boundaries.
That's the thing that triggers the portion of the petition, the boundaries. With regard to the other improvements that are shown here, do we have a sense of which ones are town responsibility versus which ones are the applicant's responsibility?
I think at the moment, they're all town responsibility.
They're all the town responsibility, okay.
Really, the second entrance to the parking lot as well?
Second entrance.
You're talking about what's in the CHAP PAC bound.
In the CHAP PAC.
All right.
I think the planning board will see this issue as part of the master subdivision of property.
So what we'd really like is to get any kind of additional information from the CHAP PAC people, and that will help us guide us.
Length of the driveways, the driveway aprons.
Just, but, but just before we move off this point, I mean, I think it just needs to be said that we're having a conversation about adding potentially 91 basements to this plan, and so I don't think that, that we should be in a position of begging for changes on the auditorium. If there are things that we feel like need to be made, I think that, that, I think we need to make those changes.
That was sort of underlying the, they're going there, but they want, if we want to get that thing and the second road?
Good.
Okay, number five, length of town, I mean, it's a point worth mentioning, but that was sort of an assumption, that's always good to say that loud. The length of, and I mean that, I don't mean that sarcastically, I mean that, I mean that, I was trying to be positive.
Thank you for the permission.
Let's go on to number five. Length of the driveways, now that seemed to be something that there was, was this resolved already?
No.
Okay, so what's the status of this thing?
Well, the status is, there's, you know, a split in terms of, good reasoning on both sides, but I don't think we've reached a consensus on it. And some of us think that it's, given our climate's unrealistic, and given that we have three-bedroom houses here, that it's unrealistic to suppose that you're only going to have two cars, and two cars in a garage in every one of these units. It just seems unrealistic. So with that, then you're going to have off-site parking, and then it ties in with the snowrebuild, because we were just reading tonight that there's a snow plant here where, sort of like, New York City will have this alternate side of the, of the street parking regulation for clearing snow. How realistic is that? And by the way, when we have that, is that realistic in terms of the emergency access, et cetera? So it's a moving target. I was, you know, Greg and Tom have been real good, strong proponents of what the applicant has proposed here, and they like it. I think Sheila and I have been sort of looking at it more carefully, and, and, not carefully, with John.
Really, John's a very-
You're going with what I have.
I know, I know.
Can I just ask, because I'm, I'm kind of a visual learner.
It looks like Dick is going to be the linchpin on this.
Do you have a picture of what it looks like with the aprons, like, from some of the other, you had some pictures of some of the other developments that you've done when you did this? Yeah, do you have a picture of what these small driveways look like? It's not going to look like that.
This, this has no apron.
Right.
The apron had-
Do you have, you don't have, so you've never done this before? Like, you don't have a picture of one that we can put down?
I don't have a picture of what this is exactly.
There may be others in that group, we provided an example of like four or five different projects, so there may be one in there that we feel will see examples of.
Yeah, because I'd love to just, I, I can't visualize what that looks like.
Does, does the proposed plan resemble Cortlandt Manor, Pleasantville, or Rydebrook in any way, that if we went to look at any of those three sites, we would see what you're trying to do?
Those are all rear entrance, those have garages at the front door.
Those have garages at the front door, all of them, okay.
As I recall, the closest model you had was Pennsylvania, there was nothing else in the Northeast, I'm saying.
All right, guys.
We've seen pictures.
You can go see it yourself, but we've seen the pictures.
I just need a picture, I just, I just, I just might not visualize it.
That's a pretty amazing tool.
Thank you, gosh, you're a much better suggestion.
So you want to, you want to, it sounds like the planning board is still deliberating this issue, so maybe we should just table it until they, I mean, I personally don't, you know, listen, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in this type of detail, I'm, I'm going to personally be guided by the planning board with this, with this issue. That's my opinion, obviously, I'm just one person.
Thank you for clarifying all of that, Rob.
I have a, maybe a question for the table and the applicant. If you, I don't think there's a way you can make the driveways longer unless you made the units smaller at this point, right?
That's correct, and fit within the envelope. Well, yeah, except, they showed us that plan that expanded the envelope a little bit, so we, I don't know if, if we really like that, but the issue is, when you look at these points, five, seven, and nine are really interrelated. That's why, I mean, they're segmented here, but they're really interrelated. So, as a consequence of seven and nine, you have five.
Yeah, I don't want to, it is worth pointing out, though, the footprint of a home, well, they are, obviously, the larger footprint at home has the ability to have more square footage underneath it, the two are not necessarily linked at the hip, right? And if you look at the examples we provided, Rydebrook is a great example, right? Those footprints are massive footprints, they're 45 to 50 foot wide by, in some cases, 80 foot deep. So by an impervious area measure, they're almost double what we're proposing here, but they're of a similar square footage. I mean, the houses live differently. So there, there's not a direct correlation between the size of the footprint and the square footage of a home. What there is a direct relationship to is the, the, the size of the footprint you need in order to accommodate a first-floor master bedroom home. Like, there's just basic requirements at, you know, at this market that you're going to need to fit on that first floor of that home, and it's a, it's a, it's a kitchen of a certain size, that has an island that's, has the ability to entertain, that has a master bedroom and a master suite, that has certain components to it. And what further complicates the design here is the fact that these are all alley-loaded. So you, you are kind of where, in a traditional front-loaded townhome, you have a lot of flexibility, once you get past the front door and the garage. Here, you lose that flexibility, because you have essentially two entrances to your home. And if you start squeezing that envelope, all of a sudden, you start losing windows on the backs of units, you start really pinching very important living spaces, and it, it is, this is not the easiest, you know, puzzle to figure out. These weren't plans that we, you know, pulled off of a shelves, shelf somewhere that we built 100 times over in other places. This was, these are the characteristics of the job, these are the limited design factors that we have to work with. We, like, what's the best we can do?
So did you back into these short driveways because you were constrained?
Yes.
Otherwise, you wouldn't do it.
Well, not to say, if we were alley-loaded, there's, there's a, there's a strong planning argument for doing it, because, like, I think we brought this up in conversation earlier, is like, what you, especially when you have these back-to-back units within an alley. So even if you had an extra 10 feet within the driveway, and you had 20 feet, you know, what that alley starts to feel like, or that service drive starts to feel like, when you have cars on either side, or, you know, just, just site clutter, it starts to look very different.
So if you didn't have this problem, you would do it anyway?
Yes, yeah, we would probably end, look, if we could, it may not have been like a, we had, we had ended up somewhere in between, probably, but would we have limited people's ability to use that driveway? 100%.
So what are the, because there, I, I think that some of the concerns we talked about, what if somebody decides that they're actually not going to pull into the garage, and they're just going to leave their car in the apron? What, I believe that probably it's a self-regulated system, but is there, is, are there stipulations in the, in the, the home?
Yeah, well, we, we'll, our offering plan will incorporate a basic set of house rules, right? Some basic rules that we'll employ from the start, that are like really good neighbor policies. And in those, we'll, you know, just our boilerplate, we'll make sure that we limit, you know, people aren't putting trash cans out on their driveway, they're not parking vehicles of certain sizes, like a, you know, a commercial vehicle, or a service van, or something like that on their driveway overnight.
How do you police that?
Like, you, uh-
It's like the basement thing, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, look, you, these, these associations, one, you, you employ a management company, right? So they're charged with driving the job every day, and you create vehicles for people to, you know, if someone is out of bounds, to file a complaint, right? There's websites, there's social media, there's, they pick up the phone and you call, and there is, but the reality is, these places do self-police, you know, that's, these, more times than not.
But again, you've had, you've had very few of these in the Northeast, and that was one of the things, one of my concerns.
As far as homeowners associations and condo associations?
No, no, again, with these very, very short aprons, because it's not just, you know, it's visitors coming in to visit, whether it's the grandkids, or someone like this coming in, service people coming in to, to make a repair, they're going to be parking in, in, in whatever this, you're going to call this, this apron or this driveway, and again, at that point-
They won't even have the ability to do it. Like, the, the, the dimension of it doesn't even invite the opportunity.
I know it doesn't invite it, but they'll do it because-
They will not. Like, it may be an isolated occurrence, but I can tell, it won't be in a repeated occurrence.
So when they come to repair your refrigerator, where do they park? In the front?
Sure. In the, in the abundance of-
A lot of the drivers are too short to fit a car or a truck in it, but what I'm concerned is that the rear end of it's going to stick out the street.
Yeah, exactly. And it's going to obstruct traffic, it's going to obstruct view, uh, views.
It's actually shared driveway, is what it-
It's because, yes, it's a big shared driveway, which could work. Could, maybe. What's the minimum then you would propose, in an optimal situation?
Full parking space depth would be-
What's that, 10 feet?
18 feet.
I think it's more, I think Bob's not here tonight, but didn't he say 12 to 18?
Like, a parking space is nine by 18.
That's the length of a parking space?
Well, so what would be optimal for, for this driveway?
Oh, I mean, you're, yeah, I mean, one, you're not-
Or minimum, I guess is a better word.
Yeah, you're going to be minimum 20 feet, right? You don't even, if anything less than that, you're inviting someone to hit the garage door.
So it would be, it would be, these, call them shared driveways, if you will, they're 24 feet wide?
20 feet wide.
20 feet wide, and then there is, from the, the curve, it's actually not a curve, but from the swale or whatever it is, to the building front, it's another, to the-
Eight to 13.
Eight to 13.
So it's eight and 20, and eight is 36 feet. And so if you went to 18 feet, or the apron to the garage, it'd be 36, and 20, it'd be 56 feet. New York City street is like 60 feet wide, and that's very, you end up with something which is really quite wide.
It's going, you know, now you, there's also an aesthetic that you have to, like, what do we want these to look like?
That's what I meant by-
And you start growing these buildings, you know, further apart, it, it's going to start to look like pretty wide canyons going down them. And that becomes like the focal point of the project, because they start taking up so much space.
And one of the things I liked about the short driveway was that you, it preclude, it attempted to preclude people from parking and leaving their cars in the driveway, and then you don't get that vigil of clutter, as you look down that alley on the bottom shot, and you see all these different cars parked in it. Some people like call it clutter, some people like to say it's a normal neighborhood, so it's, it's a subjective thing. I mean, you're getting deliveries, no one's going to be parking four or five spots down to Schlipses.
A delivery guy's going to park there, unload, go in, hop in, and drive away. So-
But they're saying, they're saying it's not, they're coming in the front door, that's what they're saying.
There's no, the only, there's no door, it's a garage, that's it.
It's always pulled up to the front door, double parks, and runs in and runs out, they're not supposed to, but they do.
The homeowner's front door is on the other side of the home. If someone were to park and leave their, theoretically, park and leave the ass end of their delivery van in that spot, they would then be walking around the entire building to ring somebody's front door, which, which why wouldn't they just park in the spots that are at that person's front door?
There's no back door, you can't go-
No, so in the back is a garage.
Oh, interesting, yeah.
This is just a garage. There's a, there's, they do have private, like, someone may have like a small patio, or if we can, you know, but it's not an entry door by any means.
But some deliveries will be made right at the garage door, in and out, just like-
You know, I want to, I want to question that, because, just, just for a minute here, the address of the home is on the front door, it's not on the back door, so if somebody comes to make a delivery, they're going to be going to the address to make the delivery, and they're, they're not going to be searching the alleys to find, I think.
No, people can put a sign on it, a number up. I find that all the time, they don't deliver to my front door, it's the garage door, because it's closer.
Yeah, so if someone were to make, to make a delivery to this home, or, you know, any of these homes, and they thought that this, this home is the advantageous place to go, I mean, they're walking around the entire building to get back to this person's front door. Back here, you have very, very private patio doors, you included, I just rolled down, we included a side entry door for the, for some functionality in the garages.
So I'd like to, if, if I can, ask about the three-car homeowner, or the, because there will be some, as Bob suggested, and, or visitors, where would they park?
They would park in the, they would-
Street, in the front.
They would park in one of the 115 surface- They would park in one of the 115 service...
But are, are all of those allocated for visitors in the plan?
Yeah. No, they're not allocated, they're open for use.
For general use?
Fifty of them could be allocated, the requirement for, in this case, 40 to be allocated. On the main street, there are about 63 spaces, so, for instance, those could be allocated. And that's, that way, your address is on the front of your building at the front door, it's either right up against the street, or it's in one of these, these open spaces, or in one of these, uh, shared pedestrian paths.
Yeah, and where we had the availability to do so, we've incorporated additional spaces on the back sides of, right, so someone did have a third car, and they, you know, it just run a home, so they would be convenient spots for them.
So I, you know, like, an eight-foot apron is really not my cup of tea, it's not what I would choose, but I, I'm, you know, kind of setting that aside, because I, I think that's more design and aesthetic than anything else. I just want to make sure, Andy, you spoke to this earlier in your presentation, but you guys have really clearly studied the sightlines for people who are pulling out of these garages, and their ability to back up and not, you know, we're not inviting, um, traffic accidents in these residential...
Yes, we looked at that with the, um, building inspector and the fire department, and if you, if you think about it, if there are no car, if these were normal driveways with cars parked in them, you'd have to get all the way to the back of, you'd have to clear that car, because you, before you could see the road in the back.
Here, if you're driving out of an apron, there's nothing, once you get, clear your garage, it's clear on all sides.
Okay.
You've got better visibility than you would if...
But in fairness, if you go back to the, to the enlarged drawing, it looks to me like, by the time you get clear enough of the garage so you can see, the back of your car is already in the, in the driveway.
Well, that's why we had, and this is a level detail that wouldn't fit into my 12 minutes, we had the, we had the two-foot rumble strip within the driveway to...
I was just looking at your drawing.
You had a two-foot what?
Where the driver, the driver, right, just take the red car. The driver is actually still, I think, is still in the garage, and the tail of his, the back end of his car is actually...
Right at the edge.
So, I'm not sure that the visibility's any better.
No, it is better, because your driveway, you'd have, you'd have to clear the car next to you before you would see the driveway. It's no different than pulling out of a parking lot. If you're in a, if you're in a perpendicular parking lot, you have to inch out until you can clear the SUV that's next to you, which is almost all the way back. This is better than that.
You still can't see, that driver cannot see in the, on that road, in the, the drawing you have right there, it's just obvious that you can't see. So, it may be better, I'm not sure it's better, because in a parking lot, you got a car next to you, and you can see through the windows of the car, you can see, but, so...
Facetiously, to his point, maybe there should be an instruction guide as to how to safely back into your...
Right by the door opener on the inside there.
Just observation.
In my opinion, it, I mean, there's some, I think, some really good, important aesthetic reasons for doing it, and those make sense. I think from my standpoint is, I understand those, I appreciate those, but I think that the way people may, in fact, use this, and also our climate in terms of how we get in and out of cars and snowplowing, et cetera, we haven't looked at that yet in detail, is that, uh, they would not be proposing this except that they're constrained. I think the aesthetics happen to work for them, uh, at least from some perspectives, and they haven't done this before, except in one place they could find in, in Pennsylvania, so it's inconsistent with what they normally do. Excuse me. And then, um, but the, the issue is, uh, whether it is in fact consistent with what we all know we do and how we behave here in terms of getting in and out of our cars and accessing garages, et cetera. So, I, I don't know if there really is a good set reason for it, one way or the other. I, I, I'm very interested in the aesthetic, and Tom and Greg have been very articulate in, in voicing that, that concern, and, and, and supporting the applicant. I, I've just had a hard time really saying, in reality, is that really going to work? And, uh, with the consequences.
I, I also just want to bring another point up, um, and I, I think that you, both Tom and Greg have made very good arguments for the fact that not everybody's looking for the same thing, but they look for a home. There are a lot of different buyers and a lot of different, um, floor plans and setups that would appeal to them, but I think one of the things that drives some of the features of this being a, a luxury, you know, marketed to a, to a, a higher-end or luxury market, is that they're not, um, they're taxed as fee simple homes. They, they carry the, they carry the tax burden of a home, and they've sort of grown into the size of a, I don't know what an average-sized home in Chappaqua is, but...
At least equal to mine, if not bigger.
It's equal to yours, if not bigger, you know, they, they're, in some ways, they're functioning not as, they're functioning partly as townhomes, but they're also functioning as fee simple homes, and buyers might bring the, certain expectations if they're going to pay a, a home price for it, I don't know what they're going to be marketed at, but if they're going to pay a fee simple tax, um, tax price on it, they might have certain expectations about what they're looking for, which goes possibly to, um, basements, goes possibly to the driveways, goes possibly to some other features that we're still talking about for this development.
We also wanted to clarify, we didn't provide an isolated, the only thing we could find, I mean, that's not the only project that we've built that has had, you know, TND characteristics and alley loaded, I mean, we have a...
In the Northeast?
Yeah, I think our, the, the sample we provided to the planning board, four or five...
There are three others in the Northeast that were...
It was one.
Yeah, it was one.
I could show that there was one.
Nothing was north of Pennsylvania.
Uh, did they...
That's not the...
Virginia, California, Arizona.
Pennsylvania, and one in Virginia, it doesn't, it's not...
Yeah, but they don't define northeast as Pennsylvania and Virginia.
So, just what, in your experience, so if these townhomes are going to be, say, a million dollars, I mean, with, and then taxed fee simple, do, I mean, do you, do you think people are, like, buy, your buyers are going to kind of balk at this size driveway, or you think it's not going to be an issue?
We're not, look, we have, we have not spent two years, you know, arguing for a site plan that we feel is destined to fail, you know, that's not, that's not, I have better things to do, you know? As much as I enjoy everyone's company, you know, it's, uh, and a challenge, like, yeah, we are very hot in, in, in proposing, yeah.
We'll watch the next one.
Yeah, I think, you know, the town boards heard the pros and cons from the planning board, and ultimately, that's going to be your decision on this issue.
But, no, so just, we did provide four samples of, whether, whether you count Pennsylvania as a northeast or not, I mean, like, this, a lot of this is a function of what, what is planning in the places that you're building, and there's not an abundance of opportunities, you know, in Westchester where there's a lot of TND neighborhoods sprouting up.
You said that in the, in the new town development, which shows the alleys, but that's not what, like, what the townhomes will look like here from the back on the, the alley drives. Do you have any drawings of what these clusters would look like with the, with the aprons as opposed to driveways?
Like red rings? Like three D rings?
Or, or just, or just allegations by somebody here that showed the, the aprons and those garages, because they're in clusters as opposed to that long alley.
But we provided cross-sections of the roadway?
Not, even if they're sketched up to lie so bad.
Yeah.
Provide elevations to the rear, we provided the elevations to the front to show the difference of the driveways.
Why don't we, why don't we jump right to the basements? That seems to be an area that...
Why do they approve basements?
Because a lot of this stuff is sort of this, you know, the square footage disturbance, that's all sort of comes out of the other, right? So you guys want basements?
Sure, so the comment of, would, would your buyer be accepting of this configuration of driveway, right? And I'm, my, my strong opinion or belief is, yes, right? That's a, that's a compromise somebody would make. Um, the basements, no. We have, I, in the 20 years that I've been building homes in this market, I have not delivered a home without, I've not delivered a two-story home without a basement.
So in your, in your floor plans, if you can remind me, how is the basement labeled? Is it rec room? Is it study? What, what do you call it? How do you market it?
So we'll market it as a lower level.
And you give the option for finishing it also, right, to the buyer?
Use your magic.
Um, and so we'll, you know, to the point where if you go into a lot of our model homes, it's not a door that goes down a flight of steps to the basement, right? It is, you know, you know, integrated into the main stair of the home, and it's open, and you walk into the house, and it is, there's a flight of stairs that goes up, there's a flight of stairs that goes down, and it is, it is a part of the entertaining space of the house.
I guess we could make a provision that says, when they market it, they specifically disclose that it cannot be used as a bedroom.
Yeah, we also, we could also deed restricted, and what Dick suggested, which, you know, then we get inspected for, for a certain period of time.
Have the maintenance company be taxed within...
Are we allowed to legis, to legislate that?
But the, the inspection's a little...
Inspection, right.
We'll have to, yeah.
That's inviting personal envision, personal...
Yeah, how do we, how do we...
No one's going to my house.
Right.
We have to see if we can come up with a language that allows it as a condition of the approval, but to buy future owners without doing an administrative search for it, I mean, it becomes...
Well, you know, the other way they could do it is, in the homeowners association requirements, do it that way, so the government is not involved in it.
That's much better.
Sure, that's, that's common for, all these, these associations would have architectural, they all have their own little architectural committees.
To enforce it also.
So you can't make any alterations or additions to the home without the approval of those committees.
Right. You have the maintenance group, be the people that rat everybody out, you know, they've got six contractor trucks there, something's going on from the small...
You could do it, so that the HOA does the inspection, and the HOA required annually to report to the town.
Right.
And how is that going to be enforced?
Somebody in the town will have to make sure they get that report.
See, I'm not, I, I just, I wonder if we either, to me, we either have to accept this is going to happen, or we have to say no basements. I mean, it, to, to put conditions on people and how they live their lives in their homes, whether it's through something that we tell in HOA they have to do, or whether we send a town employee into their homes, it seems to me that that's not the kind of town I, I want to live in. So I would suggest that let my older brother go down there and live in the basement.
So how is that not the case now, if someone wanted to build an addition onto their home? I mean, there're, there's rules and regulations that, that govern and police what somebody, I just can't go out and build a desk, I gotta go get a...
That's, that's a consequence of an application and a permit.
Sure.
Right. Somebody is not going to say, oh, I have to get a building permit because my son wants to, you know, wants to move into the basement, it just seems like it's owners.
I don't think that was the issue, I think the issue is having an additional bedroom for additional people, not having someone move from upstairs to downstairs.
Well, the, the, the child moves from upstairs to downstairs because he has to share a bedroom with somebody upstairs, for example.
Yeah, but that's when they're 15, and they already have the two kids, or three kids.
Three kids, four kids. Now we're going to tell how many kids that can have.
Yeah, but to Sheila's point, but to Sheila's point, I think it's very important, I mean, personally, if I'm saying, if I'm buying one of these units for a million, million one, and the tax is going to be 30,000 or 35,000, I'm not sure what it is, but it's, it's a lot, um, I'm going to want a basement, unless I'm not buying it. I mean, that's me, there's zero chance I would buy a million-dollar home and pay $30,000 in taxes without a basement. I mean, I, who would do that? It seems crazy, to be honest with you. I understand what's heard about kids, and there's ways to prevent it, but it just seems to me that I just don't know who would buy that.
Well, one of the first things that we looked at from the planning board was, the concern for the basements was the additional cut, the additional disturbance of ground, and that was resolved because we're going to use that extra fill for the, uh, the roadway as well as the berm out on, toward Cowan. So that was a good solution.
And it's not a wetlands issue or anything like that, or water table, nothing like that?
Well, hopefully not water table.
We don't know about water table, yeah, yeah.
But that was one of the, that was our initial concern, the basement thing becomes more of a political one, but we went through it with the building inspector, and he indicated that whatever they use down there, they're going to have a proper window for egress, for emergency, that's going to work. Uh, Dick had raised the issue of, uh, the basins, and I think the applicant offered to have some sort of restrictive, uh, language in the HOA agreement, so we were satisfied from that standpoint. We also recognize that there could be a, for a reality here that we have to consider.
I think it's also good that they offer finishing it, because that will increase the taxes. A finished, a basement does not increase the taxes, a finished basement does. So the fact is, what's your, what do you think, I mean, I know you're, you have a vested interest, but what, what percentage of people choose the finished basement, usually?
Um, look, a lot of it depends on how good our decorators are, right, when we, we, you know, how much it like resonates with someone when they come in and view it. Uh, you know, I'd say probably somewhere between, you know, 35 and 50%, you know, it's not something that, um, especially when you're, when you're, if, if it's a younger family, they're a little bit more adventurous to say, I'll, we'll do it when we need it. When you're typically selling to someone who's been through the process before, they don't want to do it.
I have a question. 35 to 50, 35 to 50% want a finished basement, where do they store their stuff?
Uh, so we don't finish the entire space downstairs, but you got to leave space, we, we house all of our utilities down there, which is, it gives us a lot of flexibility with our floor plans, and we'll put your furnaces, your water heaters, um, all of the electrical panels, and the, you know, the, what is now the whole networking, you know, setup, which is growing and growing. Um, so that will all go in the downstairs, but we'll always leave, yeah, so if it's a, uh, if it is a 1,500 square foot, you know, basement space, you know, about half of that would be finished, and then the other half would be left for, for storage and...
Why the change on this? I mean, it's not like basements are new in the Northeast, we've always had basements here, so why wasn't it originally contemplated? Why are we now talking about it?
I think it was, I mean, the way we, it was just silent, so I don't know if it was ever thought about.
Were you guys even around when the no basement thing came into play?
No, no, no.
No, but...
And I just, as a point of information, it was also asked, I think at the work session with the town board last week, with regard to the impacts, because there is a lead agency here under Saker, and we did submit information with regard to school children, which was the primary issue having to do with bedrooms, which was the discussion from way back, and there is an 11% decrease overall in the Chappaqua School District from 2007, '08 to 2018, '19, and it was asked about Girafflin Elementary, where there's a 19% district, uh, change. This change of adding the, this change of adding the nine bedrooms, uh, under the formula that's utilized, would, would, would increase three children, is what we're talking about.
Let me just say, just, just to that point, what I asked before is, it could have decreased for five, six, seven years drastically, and I don't know the answer, and then pop back up, so I just don't know that answer.
Well, again, this is the information that...
2007, '08 to 2010-year period.
This is the information we were supplied, we can go get more if we have to, I can tell you that this is consistent with what's happening all over Westchester County and all the school districts, it's just what's occurring, less people having children, there's less school children, and, and by the way, I can tell you, being a representative of the fact, there are more people holding on to their homes because they don't have options to sell and go elsewhere, and staying after their children have left, are no longer in the school districts, and they're staying in their homes for longer, it just happened all over in Westchester. So it's just, and if you want more information, we can, but those are the impacts of this...
Well, and frankly, during the public process, we will, we'll ask the school board and the superintendent to opine on it, you know, what their thoughts are too.
So, uh, my guess is what is also happening all over Westchester County is there are basements everywhere, and we don't have provisions right now, I think, in our town laws or, or codes to inspect people's basements to see if anybody's living in there. So I don't see why, in this particular case, this ought to be treated any, any differently. Like, again, I'd say either we say, no basements, because we're really worried about this, or just say, it's like any other, any other home that, that exists in town, and let them have a basement, that's something that you expect, as, as Rob says.
Well, I, I personally think there's a middle ground, where basically, you know, you deed, you put in the deed, and, uh, then there will be a small percentage of people that violate that, but it's, I think, I still think it should be personally...
Can some units be convertible? Could you have a, could you have a unit that has a convertible option for a basement, bedroom in the future?
We, we have no objection, we've stated that on the record previously, that there'd be something in the deed that restricts the bedroom basement, we have no problem with that, we're not looking for that.
I think, I think that whichever direction you decide, if you agree to the basement, you have to assume, what did you say, Casey, 50% of them have bedrooms, or if you want to do, you have to...
No, no, no.
Finished, finished.
Okay, well, if you do basements, you have to assume that there'll be bedrooms down there, and under secret, you need to do that analysis, you know, how many more children, if it's going to be an additional...
We're going to have to assume that. We're going to have to assume that. We're going to have to assume that. We're going to have to assume something we're going to deed restrict.
Actually, if your buyer is asking you to finish a basement, do you offer them some package of plans that they can choose from for finished basement?
Um, yeah, look, we try to keep, you know, we try to corral, you know, the, the custom options the best we can, yes.
But do you offer a finished basement with a bedroom option in it?
No, that was not, like, we wouldn't invite, we would not invite that upon ourselves if we're gonna turn around and tell someone they can't have it. But I mean, that's not something that we would do.
So they're not gonna be finished by Toll Brothers with a, with a bedroom in it?
Yeah. But, but look, that would also be, that, I mean, that's the easiest way to please it, right? So I have to pull a building per, permit for it and I gotta get a certificate of occupancy for it, for someone to be moving into the house. So I don't, I don't see that being a real problem.
Before we go to the rest of the list, we've pretty much sort of covered everything with touching upon other things. And they think we, you know, you know, the size of the driveways.
Can you just remind me, by increasing the size of the units, how much are we increasing the total footprint of the whole site?
Oh, so we, Andy can give you the exact number, so I think we balanced the impervious area. So we took, our initial pass-through, we looked at the existing footprints and when we substituted in our desired footprints and backed out the, uh, you know, impervious coverage that was driveway and some of that space, we netted to the same number. But there were other factors in play in, you know, what came into the overall impervious area where we had the, um, the performing arts center.
Right.
And some additional road, so, I mean, there's other stuff. But when we looked at it from, that, that was our task, it was, let's look at the, the footprints, let's look at the driveways and let's net ourselves to zero in touching.
Okay. And in terms of the additional acreage you're asking for, taking out the addition from Chappaqua, what was the, what was the delta approximately?
Uh, thirty-point-five, just roughly an acre.
Oh, just an acre? Okay.
One point five, right? Yes.
Yes.
Andy, can we get something from, it's hard for me, we've done some of this already, but can we get something from both the fire department and the police department about the aprons, that this is something that they have no issue with in terms of safety?
Uh, we got that from the building inspector, I believe.
But also, that's a building inspector, but the, the fire department and the police department have no issues in terms of egress.
Yeah, not, not only the, right, not only the aprons, but you just reminded me, I was back through my notes, when you were talking about the, the road width, Andy, and you said you met with the Mount Kisco ladder truck folks and that, that they had reviewed. And I think what you said was, we believe we came to the conclusion that this worked. Um, and I, I want more than a we believed, I want a, it worked.
We have a memo.
They did approve. They did, yeah.
With the roads.
And there's treatment under, under the grass areas.
So we don't just believe it, we know it.
We know it.
Because I wanted a narrower.
We hope for narrower roadways, to be quite honest with you.
This was the minimum that they would accept.
Exactly.
Okay, so are we good with that? I wanna, I haven't had time to look at this all completely, but we now have a snow removal and snow storage plan that we didn't have before. And one of the things that I think it implies is that snow's gonna be pushed to one side of these alleyways and that's gonna reduce their width depending on how much snow you have. So how does the fire truck expand its stabilizing feet if you've got, um, I don't know, you know, a snowbank of, of snow on one side of the alley?
It's not on the alley, it's cleared of the alley.
It's cleared of?
It's just like any other roadway. The, the full width of the pavement will be cleared when there is insufficient room for the area beyond the pavement to hold the snow. If we get two feet of snow, you need more space then. If you get three inches of snow, it just gets pushed to the side, right? Onto the lawn. If there's two feet of snow, we have to pick up some of the snow and move it through the, these areas.
So it's moving into like the end.
Off the roadways.
Got it.
So I wanna ask you about those pile areas, the two, the two that are on this, the bottom of the, the page, are they, I know that it's gonna be snow, it's gonna be filled with sand and whatever they spray out to melt the snow and you're gonna stockpile it there, is it all gonna drain into the pond or is there enough distance there that really doesn't make a difference?
There's plenty of distance there.
Okay, just checking.
It's not like it's impervious drain to the pond.
Gotcha.
And this won't be the last time the planning board gets a look at the snow removal plan.
All right. What, a day? What's that a day?
Is there anything else, somebody?
Any other comments?
Did you wanna just mention the point about the workers coming out of Whole Foods at ten o'clock at night and making their way down dark roadways to the train station and whether we could utilize the town shuttle to increase the safety? It's been raised, it's been raised.
Shuttle?